Bill, you got my test?
All right. Next on the agenda are the Board of Education norms. Haven't went through them in a while, so we're going to go through them here, Clark. Decision making: focus on the best interests of students while ensuring that decisions are financially responsible, take into account current data, consider the impact on staff, and align with our mission of working together to create success at St. Jen R2 and beyond. Preparation and effective use of time: come prepared for Board of Education meetings by reading the board packets prior to Board of Education meetings and proactively asking questions to allow time for answers to be collected or researched and then shared at the meeting. Cohesion: speak with one voice. After deliberation and consensus on a subject, move forward together as a collective board while supporting the decision in words and actions privately and publicly. Do not speak on behalf of the board without authorization from the board. Representation: act as ambassadors for the St. Genevieve R2 School District by consistently advocating for public education and staying up to date on happenings and initiatives within and around the district. And lastly, behaviors and interactions: listen to understand and communicate to explain. Respect and value the diverse perspectives, opinions, and contributions of all district stakeholders, including fellow board members, students and their families, employees, patrons, and community members. Be open-minded and engage in active listening while being aware of nonverbal behaviors as well. Encourage open and honest communication on a consistent, continuous basis, and nurture a spirit of harmony, cooperation, respect, and connectingness. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the September 20, 2022, regular open session meeting.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the MSBA Monthly Report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of September. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the release of this year's state assessment data. The preliminary results released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education show some improvement over the prior year, but state totals have not yet reached pre-pandemic levels. English Language Arts had mixed results by grade level. Math and science scores increased in all grades and courses, while Social Studies showed slight decreases in proficiency. Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven had this to say about the results. "Districts and charter schools across the state continue to face unique challenges during the 21-22 school year while working hard to focus on the well-being and academic success of students. Nothing about this past school year was typical. We must remain vigilant in educating our students, and I urge everyone to review the data through an informational lens, using these key takeaways to shape how state and local resources are best deployed to support ongoing student success." The COVID-19 pandemic continued to cause learning disruptions, periods of quarantine, and chronic absenteeism of both students and staff during the past year. Meanwhile, the state's Blue Ribbon Commission, charged with developing strategies to address teacher recruitment and retention challenges in Missouri, is continuing its work. The Commission held a public hearing in August to gather input on teacher shortage issues. Among those testifying before the Commission was Tipton art teacher and Pettis County R12 School Board member Shawn Harris.
Salaries are so low that new and veteran teachers are having to find, oftentimes, not always, a second job in order to make ends meet, in order to support themselves or their families. In April of this year, a survey came out and found Missouri was 50th out of 50 states when it came to teacher salaries and pay. Because of that, we are seeing people leave this field. We are seeing people not enter this field because of low pay. It's difficult to find substitutes when teachers leave and fill those gaps that need to be filled. Sometimes, when those teachers find a second job after a long day of working, they go to their second job, which takes away from time with their family, takes away time from themselves to have the opportunity to wind down, and that's not fair.
A statewide survey of Missouri teachers, principals, and superintendents, conducted by the Commission, showed strong support for increasing the base salary for teachers, for wellness days, and for student loan forgiveness. The Blue Ribbon Commission is scheduled to present its recommendations to the State Board of Education in October. There's still time to register for the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators, to be held in Kansas City November 3 through 5. This year's conference will include three general sessions, including keynote speaker Olympian Jackie Joyner-Kersey, more than 90 concurrent sessions, a one-day education expo, and much more. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. You also can register to attend the 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit, to be held November 2 and 3 in Kansas City. This event is designed to provide information for those who govern and work in K-12 schools, colleges, and universities, as well as law enforcement officials and others working with MSBA member districts. The Midwest School Safety Summit is presented by MSBA's Center for Education Safety and the Safe and Sound Schools Organization. On a personal note, this is my final board report program as I am retiring from MSBA after 35 years. It has been an honor to work for such an outstanding organization and to support the work of school boards and school board members throughout the state. And so, thanks for allowing me to share some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the consent agenda.
I have a quick question on that. On the substitute list, there's two RNs listed. Are those for substitute nurses or for classrooms?
Substitute nurses.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a request, I guess. I was going through it, and there was a lot to go through with the amended budget and so many things. And I would like some more time as a board to perhaps discuss the updated reopening plan, and so remove it for this month and add it next month. Or if it has to be on there, because it's a state guideline for the beginning of the year, then maybe have the caveat, when can we revisit it and modify it if we see any modifications?
The reopening plan is a requirement.
Yeah, I knew it was, but I didn't know by what date.
And this update is so our, it took out contact tracing.
Right.
Our nurses have been spending an extraordinary amount of time. I think we had a couple of cases in one of our buildings, and they had to call over 100 people.
Right.
And by the time they got to the last people on the list, it was three or four days later. I contacted all of the MAA schools, and nobody is contact tracing.
I'm happy we're not, that's not even what it was. It was just some other questions and clarifications. It's quite, yeah. I know it's a requirement. I don't know what date, it's a requirement.
You're required to update it every six months.
Right.
So you adopted not this version, but the version before it in July.
With the content tracing.
Correct.
Right.
So.
The document that we adopted earlier is this exact same document?
Without the contact tracing. Yeah, correct.
Okay, so in July, so it'll be up for possible renewing again in December?
Possibly, and/or as we see the need to.
Right.
So I was gonna explain that before you voted.
Oh, very good.
That it was, we were pulling the contact tracing out just because it's taking so much time, and none of the other schools around us are doing it anymore.
I think.
And so that's what the update is on this item.
Yeah. I don't know if now is the time for discussion, or we just go ahead and approve it and then revisit it.
Discuss it.
Yeah. Okay. One of the things that it mentions is that face coverings are encouraged, but not required, which I think is a good policy. But I mean, are any, how many people are wearing face covers? I mean, are we truly encouraging them? Are we just saying it's there for you if you want to do it?
It's more of, it's there for you want to do it, if you want to do it, and if you're doing it, it's okay. Because we do have some kids who wear them.
Right.
All the time at school. So we want to make sure their right is protected, too. So that's why it's in there, is encouraged.
Encouraged. That was one question I had, like, how are we encouraging people? Are we more or less just saying, do what is comfortable to you?
Yes, what is comfortable to you.
Okay.
Yes. And then, of course, the guidelines. If you're positive, you stay home five days. If you're symptom-free, you can come back to work or back to school, but you're encouraged to wear a mask for five days. That's the CDC guidance. So that's why we've left it encouraged.
Do we still have barriers and things in place around school, the plexiglass and all that? Is that?
No, not really.
So much anymore?
No. We have someone who has a purpose for all that plexiglass, so I'm pretty excited about that. But no, we do have them in storage, and then if we need them in the future, or if we have a staff member who would be more comfortable maybe with having a few in their room, we can definitely pull those out.
When you, when the reopening plan was drafted, you said you touched base with other AAA schools. Is this kind of the standard format of most of the reopening plans?
They're, they're, it's similar, but most of them, you know, we've, the school districts were kind of given guidelines, and then you formatted it and created it the way that fits your school district the best.
And the gist of the reopening plan is really because of COVID, not other chemical diseases like the flu, influenza A or B? It's really just about COVID?
Because of the pandemic. The ongoing pandemic, yes.
But still required?
Still required.
Okay, and then kids are not required to wear masks on buses?
No, that, was it last, this year in February?
Yeah. I think that, it looked like, as I read through it, that it was still, again, an option, if a student chooses to, but not required.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Is it a federal requirement for the reopening plan, or DSE?
It's a federal requirement with our ESER 3 money.
Because of ESER 3, yes.
Yes. And this would be the last, I'll explain more on the ESER money when we get to the budget.
Okay. Okay, do you have anything else that you were in on before I?
No, I was just gonna let you know that it was just to pull out the close contact tracing.
Okay, let me put that in notes.
Other than that, it wouldn't have showed up in the consent agenda items?
No, it would not have.
Because it would have stayed the same.
Correct. You adopted it in July, so we would have looked at it again, like Mrs. Diesel said, probably in December. Thanks, Martha.
Are there any questions?
Ms. Diesel, are you comfortable keeping it in the consent agenda?
I think so, and then perhaps we could, either in a work session or in, find some time to go through it and review it a little more.
Okay.
In detail.
But it's accessible to us all?
Yes.
Correct.
I guess I.
It's on our website.
Yeah, we don't just have access to it tonight.
Right, it's in the public participation part, I realize that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Per Policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I have no public comment cards.
I do not either.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to say something with Grant. They're always asking for good news stories, so I talked about the plague and thought we could do our, in fact.
That's a very good.
That would be great. So what that does is they put that on the MSBA website, again, everything they have shows, so all school districts can see what.
The MSBA Newsletter today had the link to it, actually.
Yes.
KSDK's website, a link.
That was awesome. All right. Next, we have a report of the superintendent.
Yes. On Board Docs, you have one note of appreciation from the Bill Gek family. It was very nice. Enrollment count. So this enrollment count is from the first day of school. Let me pull it up on my screen here so I can see it a little bit better. And if you just look down at the bottom of this document, the one that's up on the screen and the one that you all have in Board Docs, the one on Board Docs actually combines the K through 12 and the preschool enrollment. But if you just look at the K through 12 enrollment down at the bottom, we are down 14 students when you compare the first day of school last year to this year. But when you look at our January count, which is our last official count for the 2021-22 school year, that number shows that we're up a little bit. Is that number completely accurate? No, because we have students that we still carry that may be transferring somewhere else on that first day of school. So we'll have a better idea. The next official count that we actually submit to the state is at the end of the month on the, the end of this month on the last Wednesday. So we'll submit that with our October core data upload, and I'll bring you more accurate information at that time. The next slide here shows you our pre-K enrollment. Right now, we are down two students. Our pre-K, our early childhood special education especially, grows throughout the year. So I will just encourage any parents out there who has a child who is not in kindergarten, no matter if they're an infant up to age five, if you think your child has a developmental delay, please call Bethany Cudding at St. Jen Elementary. She's our early childhood coordinator. She can either help you find the resource that you need if your child is under three to get some assessments done and to address your concerns, or if your child is three or older, we can do it here at the district. So we are definitely here to help, so please give us a call. So early childhood will grow throughout the year.
Do we still have a waiting list for pre-K?
Yes. Yes. Quite a big one, if I remember right. Yes. Next up, we have Mrs. Toomes with the technology update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is our annual technology update. They're our management department. So my assistant is Dave Colman, and our technology aide is Brian Brown. Been working very hard all summer, and the starting school's always really active for us. Get this slide there. Our mission, we have five main goals. We maintain the infrastructure for the district, everything, work behind the scenes, to make everything work internet-wise, access-wise, that's on us. We provide the tools and resources necessary for our teaching and learning to take place. We also provide communication tools to help meet the needs of our students and staff, communicating with the parents. We provide professional development, and we also try and keep in our budgetary constraints. She and I work together on the budget.
Especially this past year.
Yeah, yes, and God, that's good. That's okay. We work within our budget that they give us. Our backbone, we maintain all the switches and all the wiring, lots of things that go on in the background that we help maintain so that our students and our teachers have a really, you know, good experience with technology. And we add that brand where we see this is where. Our bandwidth, we get a 2G backbone to the main campus here, and then we go with a 1G fiber between here and Bloomsdale. So it's like Bloomsdale comes back here, and then we share all the same resources. We do have to have a content filter to keep in compliance with the SEVA Act, and we maintain that annually. We do have actually two filtering systems that happen at the same time, so we have to maintain both of those. And we're involved in some of the safety here on the campus. We did get new door and card readers this year. Thank you, the administration, so much for that. It has really released a lot of our labor and time and money that we were wasting on the old system. We also maintain a video surveillance system here in the district, and we do have an off-site back-end system that goes from here in Bloomsdale and then here to the cloud, so we've got several backups. All right, so Chromebooks, we are K-12 in our Chromebooks. We do use the Dongo, and we do standardize on those. They're on touchscreen, and they're issued to all aides and staff as well. So if anybody wants one, it's a staff here at the district, they can get one issued to them. Rejection devices. We do have smart boards, medians, and tablets as needed or requested in the district. We have some interactive TVs. We're looking at one right here. And we have smart board TVs, and also we're utilizing those in the classrooms. We pushed a few more of those out in the classrooms this year. We have the software resources that we use online. Our textbooks are online. We use the classroom quite a bit. We do still have Moodle, and we have some other learning management systems that the teachers use as nicely fit. We do help with the video broadcasting students. Whenever they broadcast the games, we have a new video broadcasting system out of the field. Library media center, we help and support the staff in the library media center here in the library. We also have the visitor management system, which checks against the sex offender list and checks to make sure that people that are visiting are clear to be here around our students. We do have email. Each teacher or student does have an email account, and we use the Google Suite for that. There's lots of communication tools that come with that actual suite. We do a social media and website through App to G. That all incorporates our website, our social media, and our school app. We do have push notifications, with a calling system and a texting system. And we do have a student information system where parents can log in and see what their children are getting grades and lunch balances and things like that. And then we have an integrated online payment system, which goes through Power School and integrates into that system. With our PD, we are an e-Met School, and it's a two-year program, and it focuses on hands-on instruction with integration of technology. We do have, we receive some college graduate credit from Missouri Baptist. And we're ready to look at starting that backup yet. It's kind of been on hiatus since the pandemic, so I reached out to Missouri Baptist to see if we can get that started again. And then, as a tech department, we attend a summer training called the Midwest Tech Talk, and also the Mornet Conference that's held in Jose Beach each year. And we're also a member of the International Society for Technology Education. The good people in St. Jude County gave us a budget that we use to maintain all this good stuff, and without the administration's support, and the people of St. Jude County, we would have very little of what we have today. We do work within our means, and we do seek grants to help maintain some of the items that we do have. Whenever we have teachers come back in the fall and they request certain things, we try and get those for the teachers, if we have money. And then we like to look to the future for what's next and how to stay on budget. And that's where we're at, so if you might have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want you guys to know how amazing you are, because when this first started, you guys were wondering around. It was a long one.
I just think back, I've been here since 2000, and it's unbelievable. But without the commitment of this county, we would never have what we have. We were 100, ninth year, 101, so we made some grants. Really appreciate it, thank you guys.
Nancy, I just want to say that I, at a previous employer, I managed a network with 50 employees in five locations with one person that could use an assistant. So managing 1,800 students, more, kudos to you and your team.
Yeah. Thank you.
The problems with it, they're easy to work on. That really has, like, loved us, so it helps us to be able to do other things. So we really appreciate what county and what the administration loves.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, thank you.
Well, and I would like to say, you know, we're kind of laughing about budget this year, but as with everything, everything that Nancy and the tech department needed to order skyrocketed. So there was a lot of compromise, a lot of discussion, and they continue to do a fantastic job, but you all know that. So I really appreciate.
How much that went up this year?
Yes, I really appreciate those discussions and, yeah, the conversations we have, so. Okay? The next item on my report, Dr. McLeod?
Yes.
Is gonna talk about the Professional Development Day.
Yes, so September, we had another PD day. We carried over for our pairs and teaching assistants and aides some of the training that we needed to get in as far as de-escalation and restraint training. And then we were able to also go over the active shooter with them, training with Officer Clark. So we were able to get in a lot of material that's necessary to start the year by having that additional PD day with them. So that was definitely very helpful. With the teachers, we were able to start our letters training. This is a push for the Science of Reading Initiative. This state has started to encourage schools to also encourage their teachers to attend it. So this is something that's going to influence our instruction as far as our English Language Arts. And then we had lots of opportunities for collaboration, whether it's vertically or with their grade level. Ed Draper actually worked with some of the middle school teachers in ninth grade to talk about transitions for students, and that was well-received as well, so talking about how can we help these students come into the high school and be successful right off the bat. And then towards the end of the day, we had breakout sessions. We had a wide variety of them. We did include some of the sessions that were sessions we We did include some of the sessions that were sessions we wanted everybody to attend. So if they weren't able to go to the session, say for the student crisis prevention in August, they were able to go to it this round. But we also offered other sessions that were suggested. So we had people from the RPDC, the Regional Professional Development Center and Cape Girardeau come up and present. So the President of Technology Math. But we also had some of our own people. Nancy was one of them presenting on different areas as well. So all in all, we, and we even had a new teacher, Ms. Newman, present as well on camera in the classroom as well. So we had a good day and we got our surveys back and our next step is to sit down, look at the surveys and plan March and think about how we can make it better from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now I will turn it over to the principals for their principal reports. First one for the year.
You'll be chest ache, sir. Hear me?
She says yes.
Okay. Good evening.
I do want to say that Dr. McLeod has spent a lot of time listening to a lot of different people about those PD days and I think they turned out great, so thank you. We have, first I want to say it's been an awesome school year because it's been like the first school year that it's kind of normal again. And I think the teachers' morale is high and the student excitement and engagement is high. So we've had a lot of positive office referrals already. I'll start in the top and go across. That's Aiden Johnson, Crosby Wolk, Leland Madison, Dakota Rush, Braden Arnold, Paisley Priville, Connor Weiner, Landry Gegg, Tanner Karen and Jack Bellew with positive office referrals. They, all of them have been very helpful in different ways. I wanted to point out Dakota, he is a fifth grade student and he started in the cafeteria helping the kindergarten kids open their milks and breakfast in the morning. And Ms. Brigitis noticed that that was something he was loving and so she made him a breakfast leader. And he comes in, puts his lanyard on and he's so proud of that. We had our new student welcome, breakfast, we had donuts. Ms. Rowland worked with the kindness leaders. They gave up their recesses for about three weeks to help plan this. And they came up with a headband game and they had to guess like roles around the building, like the nurse and the counselor and the principal, what they did. The other kids had to give them clues to try to guess what was on their headband. And then they took them on a tour around the building and at each stop, they got to get a little prize. They went to the nurse and the secretaries and they went out to find Lindsay's bench and Bethany's barrow box, so that was neat. This is just about student engagement and how the teachers are really getting down with the kids and doing things that I haven't seen them do in the past couple of years. So that's really neat. That's Ms. Guilford down on the floor. She's incorporating TAB again, which is teaching artistic behaviors where they get to have a lot of choices in art class. And they haven't been able to do that the last couple of years, so that's nice. Ms. Heberly organized a bus safety day. She had a bus driver come and bring a bus and then they all went out and sat on the bus and talked about rules and safety on the bus. It was a neat day. The kids loved that because some of them didn't really ride a bus. But, yeah. You can go to the next one. We have incorporated lead roles already. We did a little different this year. We had them apply for jobs, like I did with Nancy in the intercom, and talked about what each lead role would be. And if they don't, they have to spring. They had to take an application and they had to fill it out and they had to take it home and get a parent to sign it. So like kids actually did that. I was like, probably some of them won't take it home and get a signature, but they did. So we have welcome leaders. We have our public speaking leaders that do announcements every morning. We have a new one this year, safety leaders. And they stand out on the parking lot. And then they also helped Ms. Heberly pass out safety buckets that we got donated by LaHolz. What is it, LaHolz? Yeah. They donated 40 buckets for emergency buckets. We have bags for that, yeah, for that. Thank you for that. Oh, then Homecoming Week. It was just fun. We had a lot of dress up days. We had wear your PJs because you're comfortable with your school band name. We had Farmer Country Days for our community, farming community. What you want to, what school can help you be when you grow up. And we had lots of doctors and vets, famous baseball players, things like that. And then the top one is our pep assembly. We appreciate that for us as well. So thank you, Dr.
The first slide is just a back to school sort of open house, first day, new student breakfast slide. It has a fifth grade group at the top, a kindergarten student at the bottom. At the bottom right, we have a group of middle school leaders that are reading to our pre-K students. That's one of their dragon groups. They reached out and got that started right away. And at the top, like Mrs. Zeusman said, it's just so good to see kids interacting and sitting next to each other again without plexiglass in between them. So we wanted to capture that. And then at the bottom, we had our new students. I believe we had 18 new students to start the school year. This is our homecoming slide. They sort of encompassed community, school and world. And the dress up days were centered around that. They had community heroes at the top. We had nurses and firefighters and policemen. We were very safe that day. And then we had team sports. We have our impact players there, all dressed up proudly in their jerseys. At the bottom, we have our superheroes because our school theme this year is superheroes. And we have some Wonder Women down there and Captain America. He broke his foot, but he still managed to be able to dress up and participate. And I love how his family decorated his chair for him. And then in the bottom right, we had a hat day. We sponsor a Haitian child, Merkel, and we did a hat day and all the proceeds went to pay for his tuition so that he could go to school. And then the top and the bottom there are pictures from our homecoming assembly. And at the top, those are our little preschool students. They all had matching shirts and the girls had tutus. It was pretty cute. This slide is our VIP and grandparents day at the top. So we were able to bring grandparents back in for the second year. We did donuts and stood up lunch and we did a class a day. And this year, the students decided they wanted to play board games or cards with their VIPs. And so there are a couple of pictures where they spent time. I believe one of them's playing checkers and the other's playing Uno. It was fun to watch. Then down at the bottom, our school theme this year is superheroes and it sort of ties into our power. It's a spinoff kind of of Leader and Me. Our building wanted to kind of make it their own. And so power stands for personal, on track, working with others, emotional and responsibility. And part of that, the students can earn dragon tracks and there's a picture of a classroom and so I can remember. They can get a silver one from any teacher for any reason, anytime they're doing anything correctly and a teacher notices. Gold is from administrators, Mr. Kingery or I can give those out. Red is special area. Purple is hallway behavior and blue is bathroom. So students can kind of assess how they're doing in those areas and what they need to do to improve and work on. And as a kickoff, we decided to have a power assembly. And so Captain America and Wonder Woman made an appearance. I'm not really sure about that, but Dr. Flick, can you try to see if that link will work? Mr. Kingery wrote a rap that he sang for the students at the assembly and I just wanted to share it with you. It's awesome.
How you act, how you greet and treat others, got the next fact. Always on track, it's set and goals, you're best in every town except personal. Though you work together, it's the golden rule. Work as a team and don't act a fool. Eight, emotional, it's how you feel. Respond, don't react, stay even keel. Our responsibility, you see, charge your Chromebook and keep your tummy clean. How we do the job, we got the power to pick the dragon power.
I thought that was worth sharing. So that seems to be going very well in the building and we too will be bringing student groups back in October. We're in the planning phase right now, so that's exciting to see those groups get back underway. Is there another? Yes. Oh, and all the positive office referrals. I had to bring a cheat sheet because I didn't have room to put their names. So with the positive office referrals, teachers can submit those for anything that they see that the students are doing above and beyond or just great things. So top row, left to right, we have Amelia Durham, Bentley Ruttler, Nora Roth, Wyatt Gunninger, Barrett Kreitler and Tristan Matthews. Second row, Carter Brown, Camden Keeker, Jeremy Hile, Liam Beazer, Lily Jokers and Langston Roy. And bottom row, Orion Strickfaden, Kayla Jokers, Kennedy Kissed, Oliver Gegg, Tess Huffman, Jackson DeBeau and Vera Ruttler. And we actually had two more come in today and I told them they would have to wait until next month. We were out of room on the slide. And then finally, I wanted to end with our feature teacher and super staff. Mrs. Cara Herman, our special education teacher, was nominated as feature teacher. And Mrs. Stephanie Drury, our secretary, was super staff. There's just some words that kind of summarize their nominations. Mrs. Herman's extremely patient, always has a smile on her face, never loses her patience. She has a big heart for working with all students. She answers any and all questions, handles all of the people, and there are a lot of people, going in and out of her room with grace. And the last four weeks have been much easier because of Cara. And then Stephanie greets everyone with a smile, goes above and beyond for our students and staff. She's that friendly face that makes others feel special. She immediately jumps up to help out or answer questions, has made the first few weeks of school run smoothly and makes sure everyone gets where they need to be. And we'd be lost without her. So that's our feature teacher and super staff and I believe that's it for St. Genevieve Elementary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you again for the opportunity. I certainly appreciate it. I want to start off by showing you a little bit of everyday type stuff. Even those guys down at the bottom in the center, that's not even Homecoming Week. That's a regular spirit Friday for our kids. In fact, that was a couple of weeks ago and they were already full throttle by then. So don't be surprised when we get to the Homecoming pictures and your eyes are flooded with green and white. That's kind of the way things went this year. Over on the far left, those two pictures, both up and down, are from classrooms. The top one is from fax where students are making fruity Pebble flavored Rice Krispies. And then at the bottom left is one of our math classrooms where Mrs. Weiner took the whiteboard tables and stood them up on their end so that students could move around the room. She's really trying to encourage kinesthetic learning, getting kids on the feet, getting them engaged. And that was an experiment she tried one day and just absolutely loved it. So hats off to her for thinking outside the box. In the center there, at the bottom, as I said, that's one of our Spirit Fridays. Those students were our Spirit Cape winners for that week. Above them is our eighth grade buddies who all got out of bed early one day and came in with Mr. Draper and Mr. Mueller, who you can see in the background there, and served breakfast to the faculty. And you can, as you can imagine, that went over well. That was a great treat and we certainly appreciate their thoughtfulness and giving up their own time to come in and do that for us early one morning. And then on the far right are some pictures from some of our dragon groups. I know Nani already mentioned there at the bottom right, we have some of our elementary readers. And up at the top, that's our campus cleanup crew. Just a couple of the dragon groups that we have going and we're already into week three, I believe, and those are just going great. Everybody's having a good time, but also learning and learning about community and cooperation and collaboration. So hats off both to those students and to the teachers who helped put those dragon groups together. So here's some Homecoming Week shots for you. On the, on the left there, you can see some of our guys dressed up and also on the far right there. What's really neat is when you get to see all of our students together in one place. For example, in the gym before school starts or in the cafeteria when they're eating lunch. And it's just overwhelming to see how high participation is this year, how high spirit is this year. And I agree with what Lori said, I think we're about as close to normal as we've been in a long time. Spirit is up, positive energy is up and that translates into student performance and teacher performance and we're seeing all of that. So I'm very, I'm very thankful to be in the place where we are right now. In the center there, you can see some shots from our Homecoming Assembly. This year's assembly was put together by middle school cheer, middle school spirit and middle school buddies. And in the top is a wide shot of this game where they are blindly feeding the baby in front of them. And then there's a little close up there of Anna being fed her chocolate pudding and it was great. As you can imagine, you know, it's very easy to wear out ideas on assemblies. So I really thank them for their creativeness and really keeping things fresh and keeping things different so that we're not seeing the same assembly every time. So hats off to those groups, their sponsors and their students. We have had quite a flood of positive office referrals, as we call them dragons on fire. And you know how I am, I want to make sure they all get recognized. The very first one of the year, which I always think is interesting, just to, just to see who was first, is Kiara Colton. And her picture is at the bottom. She's in that gray New Orleans shirt and she's a brand new student to us this year. And right at the beginning of the year, she got her positive office referral just for coming in with great manners, working hard to meet other kids, showing her kindness, receiving the kindness of others and just being a stand-up student that's looking for a new school home. And she went about it the right way. As you can imagine, that's a tough thing to do. I had to do that myself one time and if you don't handle it the right way, things can go south pretty fast. And Kiara came in and did an outstanding job. So hats off to Kiara for being the first, but let's recognize the others as well. Elena Vancel, Andrew Woodard, Dalton Bowman, Ava Rayum, Gunner Amston, Tucker Winch, Ricky Dinch, Camden Burasaw, Jaden Swope, Jessica Welch, Elena Willett, Alex Thorne, Aleah Stafford, Gabe Barfield, Gabe Willimek, Jake Parker, Jersey Quinn, Olivia Beckerman, Kirsten Reeves, Audrey Gegg, Lilian Crossland, Kennedy Bowen and Kate Rowland. Hats off to those guys. And our spotlight award this, this month goes to Rachel McDaniel. She does not always dress as royalty. It just happened to be Disney Day during Homecoming Week and she was dressed as, I think that's Anna from Frozen. I don't know the difference between Anna and Elsa, but said that's Anna. And she was, she was just game for it. We offered to come back and take her picture a different day and she didn't mind at all. She was just so happy about winning the award. And as you can see from the comments, what stands out, especially this time of year about Rachel is not only the quality of her academics and the quality of her coaching, but her ability to balance them. And especially with a sport that's this early in the year, that can be a tricky thing to do. But on a much bigger level, I think it speaks to Rachel's consistency. I can, I can assure you, anytime I go into Rachel's classroom, I'm going to find the kids engaged, probably in a high-level academic conversation about some piece of history or geography or sociology. And it's just, you can bank on it. You can bank on it. High engagement and really challenging students with very intelligent academic conversations. And we really appreciate Rachel for that and for her consistency. Good job, Rachel. And finally, just to give you a little sneak preview of what's coming up, today was our first club day of the year, which went quite well. And you know, this time of year, we're still forming the membership of some clubs, so it might take a little bit of time to get that ironed out, but some of them are already off and running. So good job to those guys. And Big Smiles Dental Clinic is this week. Also, grade reporting cutoff comes at the end of this week. That'll be Friday and then grades will be due next week and we'll get those progress reports out. School picture is a week from today for middle school. That's for middle school. And I just want to remind everyone that picture packets need to be purchased online through Wagner. We've left that information on our school website, also Facebook, Twitter. The students have it in their emails, they have it in their grade level Google classrooms and it's also available on the daily announcements. We try to put it in as many places as possible, so hopefully you don't have to look too hard to find that information. We try to put it in as many places as possible, so hopefully you don't have to look too hard to find that information. On the 30th, our students will combine in middle school and high school bands to perform at varsity football. And then on October 14th, the flu vaccination clinic, and information is forthcoming on that. I've already seen some good language on that and we'll do our best to make sure that that is easily disseminated to everyone as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
So Dr. Mercer is not lying when he says there's a lot of green in the cafeteria. And not even on spirit, we gotta walk in there and just absolutely blow it away. The spirit has been really, really good across the board. I think there's a couple of different elements to that. Dr. Nix has worked really hard in bringing about allowing our students to, with their grade or age appropriate, get into sporting events for free. So high school students get into high school events, middle school students get into middle school events. And I think that that's been a huge part, and we've seen a lot of students have been getting involved and engaged at volleyball, basketball at this school URA, or volleyball and football at this school URA. So we're extremely excited about that, and we definitely thank Dr. Nix for that vision and that idea, and just getting our kids involved. We brought that spirit club in the high school and are starting to have some conversations with our kids about the appropriate ways to go about and cheer for our kids and do some of those things. So spirit's in a really, really good place, and so we're seeing a lot of that in high school as well. A lot of the pictures that you see on the screen right now are just, I took some time here in the first month to make my way around and get into some classrooms and just see the great work of our teachers. And that engagement piece that Dr. Mercer and Mrs. Zeus Ben and Mrs. Yegh all talked about are definitely apparent and present within the high school as well. And you can see, we have some students that were working on a team-building activity in Ms. Newman's classroom. You can see down at the bottom there, the middle picture down at the bottom, probably one of my favorite pictures that I had the opportunity to take. I don't remember what student took that picture, but I was lighting Mr. Diamond's hands on fire. So that picture was really, really neat and really cool. I was getting ready to walk out of the classroom and he looks at me, he goes, "Dr. Boyd, you wanna take a shot of lighting your hands on fire?" And I said, "I would love to." So that was super special for me and the kids really got a kick out of that as well. Mr. Swice had his students down in the library working on some virtual D space work. Mrs. Toons talked about the work there, Mrs. Stafford really pushes in and really helps our teachers and provides them some quality opportunities. Dr. Curtin over on the right was working with bananas, and they're actually reviewing some dissections with bananas and getting in and taking a look at some different injuries that she had put into bananas that she was exploring and introducing her anatomy and physiology class. So extremely excited there. And then in the top middle section, we had some of our new students that were adding handprints to the walls. We had a big new student mixer during advisory and we got an opportunity just for us to be able to introduce ourselves and get an opportunity and get a feel for our new students, and then also get an opportunity for them to become included as part of the high school and adding their handprints to the walls down in the main hallway. So that was something that was a really neat experience. We saw a lot of smiles, they were really excited about getting to have paint on their hand and then actually slop it up on the wall. So it was really cool and really neat. Some of them looked at us like, "We don't, this is kind of a weird tradition." But it ended up being really cool and a lot of smiles. So extremely excited about that. And in the video that I've got here a little bit, you'll see the freshmen get an opportunity to do that as well. Several different big things happened this month as far as recognition. Maddie Terry was our Elks student of the month, and she's in the top right, or the top left. Down in the bottom left, we have Jacob Johns with Brock Kreitler for the Rotary Student of the Month. So for the Rotaryian meeting, we have our students choose an individual that works within our district that's made an impact on them, and Brock was the selection for this month in September. You can see they are both wearing their shimmery sparkly shirts. And at one point Jacob had brought another shirt he was gonna wear, and Mr. Toons looked at him and he said, "No, no, I think you guys need to go dress like that." So that's why they showed up at the Rotary meeting wearing their sparkly shirts during homecoming week. So that's something that we definitely appreciate, those two organizations for continuing to recognize our students and give them a platform and an opportunity to have their recognition. Colin Fritsch received national recognition for his PSAT score and also his GPA. The combination of those two gave us an opportunity to be able to recognize Colin. We actually announced it to Colin, Mr. Toons and I pulled him into my office and had a conversation with him. And Colin is typically very reserved, so we didn't know if he was going to want the recognition in front of the entire student body. So we called him and had a conversation, and he just got, he was smiling and beaming from ear to ear, and he goes, "Yeah, I would like that." And Mr. Toons and I both were kind of taken aback and kind of surprised by that. So at our homecoming assembly, we actually recognized Colin in front of the entire student body, and that was a really neat opportunity and a really neat moment, just to recognize his academic accolades. The picture on the far right, Lindsay Crump is our StuCo president, also our senior class president. She's on my principal advisory group as well. She is the brains behind the monthly student backgrounds. And every month, Mrs. Toons, thank you for doing this for us. Every month I send this to Mrs. Toons, and at some point she's probably gonna be like, "Oh, gosh, another one of these." I really appreciate it and it's super neat. This is what we actually push out to the student computer screens. And so instead of just seeing the dragon in the background, she comes up with these themes for the month. And so I've got the September one that I'll share with you in just a second. But the welcome back is actually what she created for the first day of school when kids were coming back from the building. So I just thought it was really neat. She's always full of ideas and just has a really, really good way of taking a spin on things. That's also the same banner that we used, that we printed for our freshman registration, and we also still actually have it out in the commons. Tyson Roth and his group, our leader, our development seminar, they've been working really, really hard in getting some promotional pieces out for us, and they actually have the capability of being able to print banners in-house now. And so that banner was actually created and printed by our students here at the high school. So we're extremely excited about that, and I'll explain a little bit more about some of those promotional pieces. Positive office referrals for the month, we had Tessa Wright, Owen Drury, Jacob Johns, Lani Emmens, Maddie Terry, Aiden Boyer, Logan Wolf, Abby Merklin, Larissa Dunsey, Matthew Burden, Gage Witte, Audrey Largent, Isaiah Stegall, Jacob Warren, Brianna Thaw, Kennedy Fisher, Lynn Lee Wiener, and Caden Schenbarger. If you guys haven't had an opportunity to go out to the high school social media page, we've got, Mr. Schnebel and I are taking a little bit of a different spin this time or this year. We're taking selfies with all of those students and blasting that out on social media. Some of them are very interesting, and as I'm going through and reading one of the students right before we call that student down, Mr. Schwint had made the positive office referral and said, "I want to be there." So I run down the hallway and grab Mr. Schwint as this kid's on its way down to the hallway, or down the hall. So that way Mr. Schwint can be there as we recognize the student. So it was a really cool moment, we got an opportunity to take that picture with Mr. Schwint as well. So really trying to recognize those kids, and of course, we're still giving out ice cream sandwiches for those and the kids just absolutely, some of them come down and that's the highlight. Just that ice cream sandwich. So we're super excited about that and continuing that tradition at the high school and just seeing that reciprocal, and I'll talk a little bit about the teacher of the month here in a few minutes, but that reciprocal of teachers recognizing students and students having the opportunity to recognize our teachers. So yes, you guys already alluded to our national banner recognition through Special Olympics and our Unified Champion School. This was a super awesome moment that I got to experience with Mrs. Claymore. And she actually, we got a phone call, and the lady said, "I'm with Special Olympics and I need to talk to Dr. Boyd and Ms. Claymore." And Mrs., I think it was Mrs. Dunn that answered the phone, she was like, "Oh, yeah, we get this stuff all the time." You know, this is probably some kind of promotional something. So she was trying to take information, the lady was very adamant. She said, "No, I need to talk to Dr. Boyd and Ms. Claymore." And so she was still a little skeptical, so she puts her on hold and she goes, "What is up with this?" She's like super adamant. So then she calls Kristy, and Kristy said, "I'm on my way," and Kristy is running down to my office. Because she kind of has an idea of what it might be, so then when I hear that Kristy's running to my office, I say, "All right, we've gotta take this phone call." So they put her through and they announced that we were receiving the 2022 recognition as a national banner school. So something that is extremely exciting. In the state of Missouri, they're all-time, they have two recognitions now, us and Festus High School. So that is a very, very rare opportunity for us to receive that recognition. So we are extremely excited about that. I've got the video from KSTK, it sounds like you guys have already seen it, so I won't go through and play that, but we are extremely excited about that, extremely excited about what Kristy does and provides for our students and our kids, the aides that work within our classroom, and just the way that our students are included. The inclusion piece, I think, is just phenomenal. And I think it's great not only for our students that work with Kristy day in and day out, but it's so awesome for all of the students that participate and work through our friends program, Mr. Swice, Mrs. Kind, just the great work that they do to add that inclusion piece for our students. It's super awesome and something that warms my heart. And something that's been present within our school and within our building for a number of years. You know, I remember back when I was in high school and the inclusion practices that were there, and that's continued to lead into now. And so it's just, it's super amazing, and we're just really, really thankful and grateful for all the work that everybody's put into the inclusion practices that we have here at the high school.
A huge accomplishment in St. Genevieve County today. St. Jen High School is a national banner unified champion. That's worth exceptional work and inclusivity. While on your side, Travis Cummings gives us a glimpse of the spirit that makes every student welcome.
Breathing out spirit. The dragons at St. Genevieve High are loud and proud. The school is now a national banner unified champion through Special Olympics, Missouri Southeast.
Kids are involved, kids have a voice, those kids go to assemblies, they're loved by their peers. So it's just exciting to be recognized for all the great work.
The school has worked to ensure every student matters through sports, inclusive youth leadership, and campus-wide engagement. They put on their own Unified Track meets where students with and without intellectual disabilities are on the same team.
They have the best personalities, and it's truly something that puts a smile on my face. And the athletes really put a smile on everyone else's face here at the school.
And through special art programming.
Kids are so resilient, and they don't know anything different. So you know, the artwork that they're creating is pretty awesome.
Since 2015, students and staff here at St. Genevieve have been building that inclusivity through a club called Friends, formerly known as Jelly Beans. And it all comes alive right here at Room 122. Kristy Clayhorn's classroom, where her own sister with significant disabilities once sat.
We really focus on those strengths to bring people in to be a part of what's happening here.
While her sister's no longer alive.
I think this is the way people are supposed to be. You're supposed to be kind and caring and including everyone.
Just being able to be around these kids and see the amazing things that they're able to do has inspired me to become a better person, to help integrate my community.
This honor is only a reminder to be a model for others.
I hope that other schools see this and they implement those inclusion programs and teach kids about friendship, because everybody benefits from that.
Travis Cummings, five on your side.
St. Jen High is now the second Missouri school to earn this coveted distinction, joining Festus High School.
All right, and we celebrated homecoming at the high school as well. So this has been an absolute crazy couple of weeks for us. I met with our class sponsors before school even started, and we started working on the process of getting class presidents in place on the first day of school in order to be prepared for float building, in order to make sure that classes are ready. So it was absolutely crazy. I went and told Dr. Nix, I said, "Never again, never this or that again." This was absolutely way too crazy for us right at the beginning. So we pushed that back for next school year and we're looking at October of next year. So we're excited about being able to start not with hitting the ground running quite that fast with homecoming. I love some of these pictures of, I got an opportunity this year to get around and watch our students do some float building. So I took some time on, actually a Sunday, and I drove around to each of the sites and just got to see our kids engaged and excited and putting in the time and the effort to work on their floats and watching them evolve into where they ended up getting to by the end. It was just truly remarkable. If you guys had an opportunity to, I know a lot of you guys were out at the parade. If you wanted to parade, go check out Facebook or go check out the district page and look at the floats that were created this year. Our sponsors, our kids, just amazing, amazing work. They do amazing things year in and year out with those floats. And this year, Dr. Nix and I were talking at the football game. There are years that all four of those floats would have won. And this year, we had to designate a first, second, third, and fourth. And it was truly remarkable, the work that all of those sponsors, all of those kids put into float building. The freshmen were victorious. Jamie Bowman is absolutely amazing with her vision and where she goes with float building. Ms. Newman, Alex Newman was her co-sponsor as well. And just watching them, watching their vision, listening to them talk about it when I went and had an opportunity to see the freshman float building over at Ford, seeing the big character that they had in there, the emotion they had came out and went side to side. I mean, it just truly was remarkable that, you know, we've got high school students that are putting in that work and that effort, sponsors and parents that are all just giving back and putting in and doing amazing work. So we thank them for all of that hard work and just the excitement and what they do to give back to that parade and those floats. It's become a tradition around here to have really, really good floats, and so we're thankful for that. Top middle picture are seniors, they won Powder Puff football game, and that is always a tradition. I will say, it was probably, it was a defensive struggle this year. Probably the best Powder Puff game I've seen and probably the ugliest scoring Powder Puff game. I think we had six or seven interceptions total in the game. They wanted to air it out all night and the other team just kept picking it off. So it was a very low-scoring game, seniors did come out victorious by a couple of points over the juniors. And then we had our spirit night beforehand. Our homecoming king this year was Aiden Boyer. And that's, if you haven't had an opportunity, check out the high school page and our social media team for some of the pictures with the girls' hair. I highly encourage you guys to do that. There were some really neat renditions and just a lot of fun. Seeing the kids in a completely different element other than being in a classroom really is just a lot of fun for us. So Aiden Boyer, homecoming king. And then up in the top right, we have Brenna Wiener, who was recognized as our homecoming queen this year. So both of them, very well-deserving, great stewards, great ambassadors of the high school. And so we just want to offer a special congratulations to both. A lot of others, so you can see some of our positive office referrals. You can see one of the hair pictures down there, Lani Emmens. We just had a ton of fun. One of the things that I'm trying to do this year is, and I talked to Dr. Taylor and Dr. McLeod about this, is trying to do a better job of just documenting just amazing things that our kids are doing, both in and out of the classroom. I took a trip down to the Seem Fair and watched our kids show goats this year. So I'm a little more well-versed now in seeing kids and having a better understanding of some of our FFA and what our kids are doing down there. That was really a lot of fun and very interesting as well. So getting to see Jillian Gett, Scarlett Gons, and Sarah Schmider show their goats down there and just the hard work that they put into, you know, taking care of those goats and maintaining those goats and getting them taken down there. And Mrs. Ritchie Dunsey, the work that she does with her kids. And now Ms. Okowski has jumped on board as well. So it's really a lot of fun to see them in a completely different element. Mrs. Ritchie Dunsey had them creating flowers and stems that go along with their flowers. At our PD day, we're really, really working on the culture with our teachers and our faculty and staff. And so we did a compass point activity, and I was super excited about the way that our faculty and staff presented it and the way that they handled it, and the way that they went through and took a look at the different strengths and weaknesses of each of those personality traits that each of our faculty and staff have. We were completely divided, and it blew me away to have an opportunity to see that our faculty and staff are very, very diverse. A lot of times you take a look at the staff and you're gonna have a lot of, maybe a lot of west and a lot of east. And we had a lot of, oh, actually we had a lot of norths. There were just individuals who were gonna go in there and make a decision, and it was really, really interesting just to see that. And then we paired them up and had them go and do a little activity with their group that they paired up with of taking a tarp and flipping that tarp over, kind of a little team-building activity where they have to communicate and work together. And so it was just really, it was refreshing and really awesome to see our teachers working together and working on that cultural piece. And Dr. Clay, if you would click on that video, I would be remiss. Tyson Roth and his group, his development seminar group, have been working really, really hard on some promotional pieces for the high school. And eventually, we're hoping that that's going to transcend into district-wide and some of the opportunities. And this is something that they came up and created from our freshman orientation. The video is just really, really good, and I would be remiss if I didn't share this with you guys. I think I have one more.
Yes.
And the high school teacher of the month is?
Guess I'm frozen. Hang on.
It is Mrs. Kaitlyn Paping. Kaitlyn is a brand new teacher for us at the high school. And I'll share a little story, I'll share the, the words up there about Kaitlyn of what the student shared because I think that that's super impactful. I think she deserves teacher of the month because she always has the best attitude every day. She's always positive, always asks how her day is. I just like when I am in her classroom. I can be my true self without being judged. She understands us like no other teacher has and I respect her so much for that. And for those of you guys that know Kaitlyn and know her positive demeanor and positive personality, that fits her absolutely 100% to a T. And I have to tell this little piece and I'll leave you guys with this. Her attention grabber for her students, so they're all out, working, engaging, doing their thing, having conversations. She uses STE and they respond back to her G and, and they know it's time to come all back together. How cool is that? That's it for the high school, thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last thing on my report this month, we have had some safety drills. So there are summaries in the board, on board docs for you. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And my crew, right? And my crew.
All right, next on the agenda, we have unfinished business. And the first item is the instructional program presentation of elementary physical education.
And tonight, we have Coach Bosler and Coach Kreitler here to present to you. You guys ready? Coach Mike. Is that better? Okay.
I'm Coach Dennis Kreitler. I coach PE and elementary in St. Genevieve. That's kindergarten through the fifth grade. And Coach Bosler does PE and Bloomsville Elementary. And he also does come in to help me out each, each, during the day, during the week, like he was in the day, to help me out with pre-K, first grade, second grade, and kindergarten. So I really appreciate you letting me come in to help you there. So our mission statement together is to make a difference in someone's life each day so they may find the positive in their own life. We'll deal with that by listening closely, helping in any other way we can, seeing the best in everyone. And what a great day in physical education is like, okay? Students walk into either the gym or the outside area by their teacher. And if it's inside, we usually have a quick instant activity to get students moving right away. Okay, if it's outside, we usually do a quick stretch on the track and then they do one lap around the track. So, and then we could follow that up by some kind of musical movement that we like to do this, for instance, we might have the music and the kids might gallop around until the music stops and then we might put in, okay, everybody, you know, find your deltoid, point to your deltoid or something like that to mix in some, you know, just some body awareness parts that they may have. And you should, you should probably see where they, you know, they, they might be pointing everywhere and looking around and it's kind of funny. Listen, the upper part of the, you know, the, the body, try that. But it's always fun doing stuff like that. So once we, once we do some movement concepts there, then the students sit or stand wherever they are for instruction. We usually do a team building or teamwork activity. We got a group act, we either get a group activity.
So we'll test them twice a year, what we do is we'll test the pairs you throw up in the first row of these. Just to get a baseline of what they are, we test on four different things. We test on rapid pass through, which is the bar, we'll hit eleven. We have four. So hopefully we test on the integral, the one mile is under thirteen minutes. So there's a third and second rain, we'll be back. You know, we test flexibility, which is sit reach and basically what it is, they have a little box that they put their heat up against and they're flat and they push themselves like, you know. And upper body strength, we can do the test on push-ups.
February for National Hard Run. And all the kids, once it gets toward the end of the year, they're really excited about the field day. So we organize the field day for third, fourth, and fifth grade. And all the kids do, all the grade levels do a field day. It's just that we organize third, fourth, and fifth, then in the third, second, kindergarten, first grade, preschool, and classroom, you just take theirs and you're easily able to come in and get the work of activities. The kid favorite activities that we have there is a super ten knockdown. Where they're trying to roll, they're trying to roll ball and knock them down from the other side and they're really, really doing their way there. Secret agent tag is a favorite, but our, the third, fourth, and fifth grade, and that gets them in a little bit because there's tagers and they have to figure out who the secret agents are for them. You can split up into two groups and get tagged to sit down, put your secret agent come back and re-tagging that goes in the end of the game. They have to try to figure out who the secret agent is, and it's pretty fun. Container ball, a lot of rules for that. My, again, the third, fourth, and fifth grade will love that game, it's something for everybody. Parachute activity, Dr. Lee, you went to a parachute. Everybody likes a parachute. I got to show a parachute. And the little kids get really excited about that. And they're, right now, they're just playing a game of parkour. But there's actually kids underneath the parachute who can try to be old to the other kids that are waiting to have them. There could be lifeguards that are running around trying to stay down. If you're not getting pulled under, if you're pulled under, you're just another shark. And really, everybody gets in the underneath the parachute. It's a big mess. Do it again, we just do it again. That's, that's a kid's favorite and really the, you know, the fifth graders, they still ask about that. They love doing the stations with climbing rope and playing with different masks and stuff like that that we have out. And then our coaches' favorites, the pirates and pirates and sailors activity where everybody gets involved, getting treasure in, from the, from an area where the sailors are guarding it. And that's a good movement game because not everybody's sitting around, everybody's doing something. Three ball, kickball, again, another favorite with the fourth and fifth grade where there's three people, they kick a ball at the same time and they, what I like about that is nobody throws ball in body, they have to get the right color ball back into a Google Duke to get somebody out. So you still have three people that actually kick the ball, they run bases and they can keep going. But when the balls get back into the right color Duke, if they're off base, that's an out. And there could be multiple outs in one play and, you know, it's time to switch. So that, that, that's really a good fast-paced kickball game and it's, the kids just work. Really anything that we can play with all students moving around safely and have a good time with the kids. And, and being members of MoJagals and Javelin America, we've done four, two times for Airbus, it's great to let us, uh, do these closing conferences where we've been, people asked every year to meet people and get connected to other P E coaches around, your, what they need. We're willing to follow them and glitter and take, I think it's one sort of what gives us a big win for us, a moment we can do, which they wouldn't, that we have to do. So we just, we love that and we keep, keep up the date and we'll be in that real good mood.
Here's just some photos. The top left one is, that's some station work. And in the background, that's the, the bounce test that we were so fortunate to, our PTO blogged up probably three years ago. Kids love it, I mean, kids absolutely love it. It wasn't such a pain in the butt to get out. That gets out probably three, four times a year. And we just do station work where everybody gets a chance to go through that. The bottom left down there, it's kind of like our make it, take it. These are older kids, so we're, we're using this for basketball. So they're working on their basketball shots, they'll go up to a dock if they shouldn't make it. You've got a big block, a box, our big box of blocks and they'll block if they make it and then we see them build the biggest tower. So that's what they're doing down there on the bottom left. The bottom right, that's a trust-building activity that we do. And what we'll do is we'll go outside and the trail that goes over to the machine shop where, next to us. And one student will be blindfolded, the other one will have to guide them through the trail. So they just got to trust their partner and it's just really good. Yeah. But they do a really good job with it. And we do, I'll do that with, you know, third, fourth, and fifth graders. And then the top one is just, it's a throwing activity and a tag game that you got out, if you've got an obstacle course over there on the other side that the kids are up there to get back in. So it's just, there's just some photos of, you know, some of the things that we'll do out at this elementary and the things that the kids enjoy to do. That's pretty all it.
Thank you guys. I don't think I could make it through some of those games.
I have a quick question. Do you guys still have like a fifth grade parent day?
If you could remember, we did that and then COVID did.
Yes.
Didn't fit on my mind to start doing it. And I like to do it. I can remember the last one we had, it got so big in our tiny little gym.
Yes.
It really got unsafe.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's in my mind to do it again.
Yeah.
I'm kind of waiting on that yawn to.
I figured COVID kind of put a damper on that, but, well, I am just going to say I had the pleasure of working with both of these gentlemen. And over the years, the way that you changed PE from, so that the focus is always everyone is engaged and moving, not like Stan, not that I ever really saw this happen, but I know in years past, especially when we were in school, like one kid was moving and everybody else was watching that kid move till it was your turn or whatever. And these guys are the opposite of that. Everyone is moving all the time, it seems like. So that's great. I was going to say that because I saw it a lot.
All right, thank you. Next, under unfinished business, we have the emergency operations plan.
Now I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. McLeod.
We reviewed the district emergency operations plan and made a few minor changes. Most of them are in tables with the hiring of new personnel and the flow charts. Some, some of the different teams that people are in changed as well. We did have a few areas where we updated just the procedures for communication as well. But those were the big changes for the plan. But overall, the, the underlying plan is the same.
And we have the appropriate personnel review, the appropriate section. So for example, Mrs. Lidle, our nursing coordinator, reviewed all that nursing section. Mrs. Otto reviewed the communications section. We had Officer Clark and Mrs. Gag review sections as well. We will be, last year was our first year to meet with our first responders. And we had members of the hospital at that meeting as well. We're, we're planning on doing that again and we're in the process of scheduling that meeting. During that meeting, we take the emergency operations plan and give it to them for their review and any suggestions that they might have, being that they're on the, on the ground level of emergency operations. So that meeting is, is in the works.
Also probably did, it's very detailed, but I appreciate all the work. Do we make sure that our partner organizations have either a new hard copy or access to the app?
Absolutely. So after our last first responder meeting, I, I don't think the Quick Access app is as accessible or approachable to outside organizations as it is to our people because we, we have them on a daily basis and we're able to talk to them about updates and how to use it. So we're in the process of updating that list and Officer Clark is going to, there's a report that we can request from Quick Access that will tell us who's received the activation email and who has yet to activate the account. So we're going to work really hard this year on, on working with those people and getting their accounts activated. So they have that on their phone, but in addition to that, we do provide copies to a specific group of emergency personnel as well.
Make Sheriff's Department, Police Department, they give their input on some of those.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, under unfinished business, we have the 2022, 2023 bus routes.
Yes, and you have access to the maps under your executive content. We, we keep those there and we don't make them public just in case there is someone who would want to do harm. So there's also a letter in there from Mr. Joker, our general manager at Fowler Bus. Thirty-one routes, that includes our Career Center route. And we'll talk about that more when I talk about the amended budget, our special education route, and our ECSE bus routes, early childhood special education. Mr. Joker said that there's no major route changes for this school year. And then I always leave the fact on the bottom of this slide here that our buses travel approximately 2,200 miles per day. We're covering an extremely large area within our county. And it's interesting, we do not cover the entire county. We cover the majority, but we do have kids that live in St. Genevieve County that attend Farmington, Bonterre, Perryville. Bonterre, Perryville.
North County?
North County, yes. So we cover a lot of miles.
Don't believe one of the biggest.
We're one of the, we're at the top of that 500.
Drug checklist, we had 20th, 20th, yeah. There was some stats on the back of that.
Yeah. I do believe Perryville's above us on that list. So, yes. We cover a lot of area.
District. Considering like if you go to Jefferson County, there's, I don't know how many, you probably do nine or 10 districts in Jefferson County.
In Jefferson County. And the same thing, St. Francis County. A lot of school districts in that county. So.
All right.
Motion to approve the bus routes for 2022, 2023 school year.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries next. Under agenda, we have new business and the first item is the assessment plan and updated.
I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. McLeod.
So the assessment plan, we updated a few pieces, but overall, it remains the same. In the table, the one addition that was there is the kindergarten degree assessment. That's something that DUCY is asking us to do. And as, as we're learning more about M sub six, we're learning more about like what exactly meets the requirements and what they're asking for. Other than that, the plan includes some items on testing security and preparing for the test, not just before the test, but helping to help your students know how to take a test, whether it's multiple choice or extended response or justifying answers. So making sure that they're prepared to apply their knowledge throughout the year, not just going on state tests. So, yeah, some of it is, some of it helps guide our instruction as well. So for instance, the B R A that's going on multiple grade levels, that's to assess where a student falls in their reading. And that helps them to kind of be able to pinpoint areas of instruction. We're, we're working on trying to focus on that piece of it versus, first they fall in this level. So more of a proactive approach of, well, they may need to work more on fluency. Let's work on these certain strategies here for this group of kids. And that's giving as a benchmark. So you're giving it at the beginning, the middle, and the end, depending on where students fall. If students fall at a certain level above, then there's, there's not a need to test them. But sometimes teachers still want to know what kind of growth did that student make. So a lot of times they opt to still test the ones that don't need to be tested.
I have a motion in a second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries next. Under the budget.
Okay. Oh no. Well, I was going to pull it up here on the screen. It looks like Board Docs doesn't want to pull it up. So, so all of you have a hard copy of the budget and it is in Board Docs for everyone to see and review. We did do some updates. Thank you, Mr. Gettinger. He found my typos. As an old business teacher, it just hurts my heart. So I apologize for those. So what I'm going to do is I have a bunch of tabs and I'm going to go through and talk about some of the highlights. So if you go to page number one, which is right behind the cover, we inserted this page and I restructured the budget book. We inserted this page with the board members' names. After the meeting tonight, we'll record the vote in this, this copy, which will be the superintendent's copy and have the board president and secretary sign it. I don't think we've ever done that in the past, other than it's in the board minutes. So that's something we need to consider doing moving forward. We also added on page two, a table of contents. So there's an index there. So you can, and all the pages are numbered. So that's a new thing, too. If you go to page three, this is my letter that gives you a, a quick summary of the budget. And then if you move to page four, page four are the, lists the adjustments and the additions. And so it, it talks about, we added an early childhood special ed teacher, we added a counselor. So it goes through those kind of major changes that we made. The next page, on page five, we have a little bit about what the ASBR is, the annual secretary of the board report. We have just a little bit of information about governance, which is the board's role. We have to identify in the book the basis of accounting and St. Jen uses the cash basis of accounting. So it describes what that is. Some information on the school budget. If you continue on page seven, we have descriptions of revenue by object codes. Then we have expenses by function and expenses by objects. And then the very last thing on page 11 that I added was the link to the accounting manual on the DUCY website. So if anyone's interested in reading it, it is there. Pages 12, 13, 14, 15, and I believe 16 contain the board approved salary schedules. You approved all of those at the June 21st meeting. So all of that information is there and listed out. We are required in the budget book to put three-year revenue comparisons. So those are listed on pages 17 through 26. And then on page 27, we're also required to put three, a three-year comparison for expenses. So that goes from pages 27 through pages 67. So if you go to page 68, this is where we actually start talking about this specific budget amendment. So what you have here on page 68 is a budget summary for this fiscal year only. This does not take into account any account balances that the district has. So it lists out all of the estimated revenues the district should take in, all of the estimated expenses that we should expend, subtract revenues from expenses, transfers that will need to be done into Fund Two to cover salaries and benefits for teachers. And this document assumes for Fund Four, doing a maximum transfer amount, but I'm not sure that that's going to be needed. That'll be something that Dr. Taylor and I will look at in May and discuss with you at the May board meeting. Because if you have to do a maximum transfer into Fund Four, the board has to approve it in June. So we'll have a better idea closer to the end of the year where we'll end up. Now, this budget does have in it the $10 million for Prop SG plus the interest that we're going to earn from some investments that we're doing with the money right now. Those, that money was invested today for six months. So that investment should yield, would you say it was?
It was only $7.5 million that was invested this morning in a six-month treasury at 3.7%.
So should yield more funds to help pay for the projects. So with that in there, we're projected, and I'm going to talk about this more when I get to the ESER money. So we're pulling in, we pulled in, in this fiscal year, all of the ESER II money that was left. We expended it all out of last year, but we make a large June 15 payroll. And it takes DUCY about two weeks to process any request that you put in. You have to expend the money and then ask to be reimbursed. So we cannot typically get that request in, give them two weeks and get it processed and back by June 30 to go in the appropriate fiscal year. So this budget takes into account pulling in all of the remaining ESER II bu, two funds, the majority of ESER III this year because we are going to expend all of it out this year and be finished with that, that grant. Also, it finishes out the non-publics money and I'll talk more about that when we get down into the specifics for CARES, CARES Act and ESER I. Is that right? So we are going to build balances, but it's because we're pulling in all of that grant money. And right now, that estimate looks like we're going to build balances by $990,000. A lot of people are like, what are you doing with your ESER money? Well, we're, we're, we're using it to pay salary and benefits, the majority, to free up local funds, which we're going to keep in our reserves to be able to fight the wholesome legal battle. So, you know, to, to pay our portion of that, and our portion is three to 4.5 million dollars. So that's why these funds have been brought in. And last year, you saw a big increase in our reserves and you're going to see a big increase this year. We're pulling in all of that federal money to build those reserves to be able to pay those legal fees as this, as this battle goes on. Okay? With me? All right. So let's go to page 69, which is the next page. We have a debt service bond payment summary for this fiscal year. You see that we still have the St. Jen 2010 C bonds, the 2015 GO refunding bonds, and the 2020 refunding bonds that we're paying on. In total, with the principal payments and the interest payments, we should pay a little bit more than $1.4 million in principal and interest payments for the bonds that are out there. We will add to this when we sell the second group of $10 million next year. Yes. So we'll, that, this will change next year or the following year drastically. But this is what we have right now that we're paying on. And then on the right side of that black line, you see the outstanding principal and the interest. So it's about seven, 7.5, $8 million still out there. Okay? If you go to page 70, this is where we start looking at the revenues projections for this year. I'll point out that under the current taxes, we're projecting that we should bring in about $8.1 million. And I wanted to point out that projection does not account for the wholesome and Mississippi Lime tax money that will go into the escrow account with the county collector. So it, it is not in this budget. This is what we think is going to come in without those funds. Okay? If you go to page 72, 71, at the top of page 71, we have premium on bonds sold. Under the Fund Four, there's $770,000 there. And that, if you remember from last month, is the, the money from the sale of the bonds that LJ Hart presented on. So we put the full amount there and then we show their expenditure under a different account. Okay? But that amount does not take into account the interest that it's going to earn. So Dr. Taylor and I will look at that and be able to record and have a more accurate number in February when we do the next budget amendment. And then if you go to page 80, on page 80, if you look at 5422, it's about halfway down the page, you see ARPSER III funds. In total, the district has $1.2 million left in ESER III funds. We may or may not pull all of that revenue in this year. It kind of depends our payrolls and how much we expend out. So some of that money may actually be pulled in next school year because of that June 15 payroll that I talked about a while ago. And again, we'll be able to make the necessary adjustment in February to have a better idea where we're actually going to be at with this revenue source. Underneath it, you have ESER II money. That's $184,000. That is the final payment from our June 15 payroll and that closes out our ESER II account. And so we've submitted to DUCY our final expenditure report, which is a requirement for, for all federal grants that you receive. Underneath that, on 5424, you see ESER I funds. There's about $101,000 there. And then you see CARES Gears funds. There's about 600, or $6,362. Those two funds are actually non-public amounts. We were required to manage the non-public ESER I funds because they use the Title I calculation. And so non-publics got a portion of the ESER I funds. They also got ESER II and ESER III, but DUCY made the decision to go with a third party to manage those funds because having a public school district manage the non-publics funds under this ESER I and these Gears funds, everything that the, the non-publics ordered and requested, we bought and got reimbursement for. And technically, the district owns those things. So at some point in the future, working with the non-publics, Dr. Taylor will need to figure out how to give them the opportunity to purchase that and truly make it theirs.
We have a.
Yes, I figured you did. So that is, should be all of the ESER and CARES money. And hopefully that finishes, that should finish it all this year. If you go to page 82, you have 5611 sailor bonds. And you see under Fund Four, the capital projects, there's $10 million there. That is for Prop SG. And now we're going to transition to the expenses. There's a few things that I wanted to point out. So our ESER III for this school year is going to be tied to salary and benefits for elementary teachers at Bloomsdale Elementary and St. Jen Elementary. We're tying our Stars program, our alternative school, both teachers and the, the paraprofessional to ESER III money. All of our counselors are tied to ESER III and all of our nurses, all but one, and a portion of her money is tied to another federal program. We're tying all of their salary and benefits to the ESER III funds. So you, as you go through, you should see the project code. And that's the last five numbers on an account. You should see 42200. That means that it's ESER III. And we should have it in the description for that account. And then if you go to 102, page 102, we have separate accounts for our vocational, our BOAG program, business education, fax, and the auto mechanics industrial tech at the high school. Those are separate accounts because they're what are called career technical education programs, CTE. We love acronyms in education. But I wanted to point out there, there are a few of those, like auto mechanics. If you compare what we spent last year to this year, we're spending more money. But there are CTE grants that we apply for every year in those four areas. And this year, we have a very large grant that was approved and we pulled some things off to take it down because, you know, we don't need two tire changers for automotive. But so anytime you look through there and you see a project code of 33202, that's a grant. Some of those grants are 50/50. Some of them are 75/25. And the state did reduce a few of the 50/50s down in order to spread the money out more. So we are going to get reimbursement for a portion of those expenses. And then if you go to page 110, there's an account here, 1921 contracted vocational. And I wanted to point this out because I need to make you aware. In 2021, we spent $64,500 on contracted vocational. This is the tuition that we pay to the Perryville Area Career Technical Center. And that tuition is for St. Jen and Valley students. So in 2021-24, we paid $64,500. In 2021-22, we paid $108,000 because we have more students going to Perryville. In 2021-23, we're projected to pay $145,800 because we have that many more students going to the program. And I, I am pointing this And I am pointing this out to make you aware that at some point in the future, if this growth continues, which is great, we're going to have to look at going back to an AMPM vocational bus and sending two groups of students to Perryville.
Right.
And I think that's, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, that's already been kind of discussed with Perryville?
I just had that conversation with Mr. Hayden, the director down at the Perryville Career Technical Center. And he actually was the one that offered the morning and afternoon. Dr. Flee, I had talked about the growing numbers and having a need for two buses. Our initial thought was we would be sitting two buses a day out for the morning. And when Mr. Hayden was here for open house, him and I started having those preliminary discussions about the opportunity to be able to look at it morning and afternoon, which from a master schedule standpoint at the high school opens a lot of things up for us if we can balance those things out and give us an opportunity to be able to get a little more creative for master schedules too.
So I'm just making you aware, because we may be looking at next year.
We have, the buses completely pulled this year.
Yes.
The 140, you have 800. Does that include the two bus routes or just one? Is that a completely different item in the budget for addition of bus route?
The $145,000, that does not include the bus.
Okay.
That is just straight tuition.
Okay.
The bus is recorded 2551. We'll get to it, and I'll show it to you.
And Dr. Flee, do they charge per student?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the tuition rate is $2,700 per student for the year. We set that at the annual advisory meeting, and we have that, should be coming up soon.
We'll have one in the fall, in the spring.
I'm thinking that's what the tuition is for this year. And we typically set it for two years. And I think this is the second year at that rate, so it'll probably go up.
Okay.
Okay?
Looks like it was $54,000 for the vocational transportation.
Yes. That sounds correct.
So you have to double that essentially?
Yes. If we run two buses, we'll have to double it. And then if you would look at page 132, I wanted to point something out. We have a few accounts for the board members here. Like when they go to conferences, we pay for their conference fees and things like that. But under the board account, we also have fees for the audit services that are currently going on, legal services, election services, advertising, and some other things that the board makes decisions on. And I point this out because this year, under legal services, I've budgeted $450,000. I'm just not sure what the county's going to need. But I also, because last month, you asked me how much we had spent legal fees last year, and I did put a copy of this in Board Docs today. This is a report that we ran out of our accounting software. And so in total last year, the district paid $245,904 in legal fees. Of that amount, $3,841 was actually the district calling Mikis O'Toole, which is the district's legal provider, seeking guidance. The rest of that $242,000 went to the county for legal issues that they're dealing with, such as the wholesome tax protest. So that breakdown and that information is attached with the amended budget book, because it does relate to what is in here. So for now, we're projecting about $450,000 in legal fees. Could be less, could be more. We'll keep an eye on it and make the amendment in February as needed. If you go to page 142. At the top, we have our School Resource Officer account, and in General Supplies, there's a large jump there. There's $68,125 budgeted. That is for the new door lock system. We know already that we'll have to amend that and raise it, because we need to finalize the door lock at Bloomsdale Elementary out to that playground. We're still waiting on the parts for that. We're also going to take a look at the door in the high school, actually, at the very end of this hallway. But the issue with that door is the current door and the push bar that's on the door will not work with the lock system. So we're also going to get a price on that door, just to see what's the cost to fix that, because that's where those kids come in, in the morning, out of that parking lot. So we really need to figure out a way to address that. If you go to page 148. We have the non-public account, 3711, and you see there the rest of the expenses that we've actually spent today, so we can seek the reimbursement. That has to be requested by the end of the month, so we'll make sure to get that turned in. The other portion of the non-public money that you saw, the larger numbers in the revenues, those are actually expenses from the previous school year. We're just seeking the reimbursement now. And then if you go to the next page, 149, you see we have setup accounts, 4031, Architectural Engineering Legal Services, and 4051, Facility Acquisition, Construction, and Improvement. We've assigned codes to those to be able to identify them as Prop SG accounts. So the accounts that end in 02, 022, and then the three twos, about midway through the page, those are the accounts that we plan to expend money for, for Prop SG. And so it should just be those two accounts.
One second, when Dr. Flee?
One is under the 4031. It's 404031, 6521, 1,000. Did you find that one? And then underneath that, under the Facilities Acquisition, Construction, it's the very last one.
Got it.
Okay. Oh, I take that back. There is under Debt Service on the very next page, there's one more account. And that's the bond issuance fees. That's that $130,000 that LJ Hart and company, that's their service fee for selling those bonds for us. So we have to pay them for that. 151 is a budget summary that takes into account our balances. This page includes the assessed valuation, our best estimate on uncollectible taxes, which does include the wholesome and the Mississippi Lime protest. It's about midway down the page, so that's anticipated to be like 9.3 million. That number also includes any delinquent taxes that we, or taxes that we think won't get paid. It includes the assessors' fees. So you can kind of see that $990,000, again, under the total column on the right, that shows the growth that we think we're going to be able to accomplish to pay some of those legal fees in our balances. And then the last three pages we added this year, we've always talked about historical data. We've always talked about debt service. So 152 is a summary of the district's debt service tax rate from 1981 to present. Anywhere you see a star is a year that I could not find any information in Mr. Stewart's old files. Those were interesting to dig through. And then 153 is historical data for our operating and debt service tax rates together. Again, those span 1982 to 2000, this year, 2022, 23. And then the last page, 154, is the tax rate comparison to surrounding school districts that I always talk about. This information is actually from last year. DESI doesn't publish the tax rate comparison until late October, November. So as soon as they publish that information, I will update this, and we'll put it in the February amended budget. And that is a lot of information, and I will take questions now if you have them.
I want to just to let everybody know that we get the board package a week in advance, so we get to look at this. This all comes to us tonight when we get in the office.
Interesting weekend.
Yes. Yes.
I know everybody has opportunity, but I think I interrupted Mr. Gettinger's time with Dr. Flee, but I think we probably spent an hour or two in her office yesterday, so I greatly appreciate that.
No problem.
I wanted to just point out that it's great we've been talking about career technical, I call it Botech, but for quite some years, and the need for more in circulate, you want the mechanics, outfitters, carpenters, traffic artists, and some of these CTE grants, and the fact that we're looking at maybe a second bus, that's great. I know that that accounts for a lot of expenses in this budget, but it also is some matching grant funds also.
Correct.
That $990,000 to the good, that includes that $770,000 bond premium, right?
Correct.
So that was tremendous on LJ Hart's part to get that. I appreciated that, and also to do with our helping, our financial rating.
Correct.
So we got that bond premium, because we have had such good finances. And then we talked about the ESER funds. I know we use it a lot for salaries, but we also added some teachers and some--
Yes, we did some--
Teacher coaches, I guess, also.
Yes, we did some class size reduction teachers, and those teachers are still in place. And yes, we added an instructional reading coach. And so she's currently tied there, and she should go back to Title I next year.
And I know from those additions, we did, you did, some look at what we didn't need going forward, and we, you know, from a budget standpoint, from being fiscally conservative, didn't replace everyone this past year.
Correct. We're taking a hard look at class sizes and the needs in each building. I'm smiling at Dr. Boyd, because he spent a lot of time with us, because he had the majority of the retirees last year. But yes, looking at class sizes, looking at programs that have grown and just needed more help. They were great conversations. I think they made Dr. Boyd nervous, but they were great conversations.
I guess they're muddling speeches.
I just had a question, and I didn't know if you could answer it. How much is sitting in escrow from wholesome and Mississippi Lime? I didn't mean, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Eight point four.
Right.
No.
They did that.
It's about 8.4 million.
Yeah.
No.
So it's going to approach, I'm sorry, it's going to approach 17 or 18 this year.
Yes. Yes. I have that number, and an email from Claudia that I can share.
It's a large bottom line that's sitting there. So on top of that, we're spending $242,000 this past year to help with the county battle and this fight, and we're spending $450,000 more dollars this year to continue that fight. So I appreciate all the wholesome's done for us, and definitely all the Lime's done for us, and I know that they're just doing it because they feel they have to.
For doing their right.
Observing their rights going forward. Absolutely. I just, if we don't win this battle, it's going to have horrible effects throughout the state considering. So, and I appreciate all of the industry in town. We wouldn't have these funds if it wasn't for all the industry we have in this county. Greatly appreciated. So that's all I have. A never-ending puzzle.
Yes, Dr. Taylor gets to do the next one. I'll be his mentor.
Thank you all very much. I'm building admin also.
Yes.
I'm making my vote, please, in the 2022 one we're spending.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to everyone who attended tonight, for the teachers who stuck around. I told you it was fun.
Yes, it's a good night.
Yeah. Don't leave that mask on.
Thank you all very much. Next, we have adjourned to executive closed session. This is Diesel.
Oh, gosh. I get to read my part. And I have had often-on laryngitis for almost a month, and I think it's time to go to an ENT or something, so bear with me. Well, if they can tolerate it. Under revised motion statute 610021, I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting and a closed record with a closed vote after a short break for the first purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business: hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees, and scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals. Roll call vote. Oh, yeah. Okay. I got to have the motion. And we just switched to these, so it's kind of a new thing.
All right.
Okay, so Mr. Bova made a motion. Oh, I made the motion, that's right. Excuse me.
Eric second.
And Eric seconded. Okay, now we'll do roll call vote. I don't see it. Oh, here. I found it. Okay. Jamie Baloo? Or do you say this? Okay. Jamie?
Yes.
Eric Bosler?
Yes.
David Bova?
Yes.
Geraldine Diesel?
Yes.
Josh Gettinger?
Yes.
James Kirschner?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Yeah.
Passed with a 7-0. All right.
Everybody have a good night. Thank you.